Into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, first thing on the agenda is appoint Catherine Mellon to the Warren Cultural Council. Okay. Uh huh. Remember that quacking?
It was quacking though.
Okay. So we got a letter of interest for the cultural council from Catherine. And do you have any questions?
No, she's not here.
She's not here. Is she online via Zoom?
Nope.
She asked if she needed to be. I said you can or cannot, as long as you can read the letter, so.
We have nobody opposing her being on the council, right?
No.
All right. I'll make a motion to appoint Catherine Mellon to the Warren Cultural Council for a three-year term.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Chi Hocker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Catherine Mellon is appointed to the Warren Cultural Council. Okay. Good evening, sir. How you doing? Nope. We'll sign this and we'll let you get set up. You too. You know, there's only so many times I can lead you to the water.
Okay. We'll just start with her.
Okay. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is vote to give permission to the town clerk to lower the number of hours for early voting for the election to 25% of the office hours. Would you like to explain?
Sure.
Can you please come up and identify yourself in your position?
Come up there?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, front, so everybody can see you.
Well, I'm probably done.
You could stand on a chair.
I don't trust me to do that. I am Laura Stockley, the town clerk. So the state is allowing towns with zero to 4,999 registered voters, which is us, to only be open for early voting hours, weekday hours only. This applies to at least 25% of regular business hours, instead of every hour that I'm open for just the regular business hours. We still have to be open both weekend days, starts on Saturday the 22nd. We also do Saturday, the 29th. I'm required to be open four hours each one of those days, but this would only pertain to our normal business hours during the week. So if you, and it has to be voted on by the Board of Selectmen, and it has to be voted on by October 2nd. So tonight is really the only night you can, you know, make a vote for me, but that way it would entitle us to not have to be open seven hours. Last election, which was on September 6th, early voting was only one week, and my payroll was $1,200, because I have to staff people to do it, and we only had 12 voters, which roughly came up to be close to $100 a ballot, you know, for people who voted. And honestly, a couple of those people were workers, so people who actually got in their car, drove here to vote was less than 10. It probably will be more than that for this election, but I'm not anticipating a huge turnout, and my payroll would be actually for two weeks' worth. If I can reduce the hours, it'll be maybe two hours a day. I haven't paid dollars yet, because I don't know if it was going to get approved yet, but it would reduce payroll probably by at least $1,500, you know, which I think is a substantial savings. And you'll still have plenty, I mean, we would be open at least 24 hours total over the course of 12 days of early voting, and I think that's plenty of time for people to come in and vote early if they choose to do so. It would be, you know, multiple, two weeks long, from October 22nd until November 4th. And we'll post the schedule everywhere, so people would know when we're open, when we're not, you know, et cetera.
So I would.
Do you have anything else?
I think that's pretty much something.
Okay. Do you have any questions, sir?
No, I think I'm fine with it, as long as the hours are posted, right? So people will.
I have eight hours to go with this. I'm going to be on the state website. I have to submit it to them by October 8th. I waited to do so. I have it ready to go, well, depending on the hours, but it's going to be on our website. It's going to be, and I post on our town boards. Please see our website for details, and then they can find it that way. People can just call. I, they, well, so early voting starts, I can't put all the hours on the digital board, but they do copy for details, and we'll give it to them.
He's talking about the app. You can send it.
Oh, we can do that.
I think somebody did do that for the last one.
We have more than a thousand users.
Yes, I'll post it wherever, you know, I would do that regardless of what you vote. Whatever the hours are, we want to get it out there for everyone. And this doesn't change the fact people can also still vote by mail. You know, it's not limiting you extremely as far as if you can't be here on November 8th, there's still mailing ballots. That's, you know, we already have over 450 of those applied for that we're going to be mailing out as soon as the ballots hit here, so hopefully fun stuff are coming.
All right. Do you have any other questions?
Nope.
Do you have any questions, sir?
Couple comments. Thank you very much for what you do. I, we appreciate all your, you know, your service, what you are doing. I don't have any objection, just like Richard said, tell everybody, inform everybody.
Yep. And I'm going to hang it, and I'll post the schedule outside once it's made, so even if people are just coming by the building to pay a bill or whatever, it's going to be hanging.
Use all the tools.
You know, I've got it on the door, so if people do come, let's say at 8:30 in the morning, and see, you know, what the schedule is, so they know when they can come back for the entire, like I said, it's a course of about 12 days long.
Okay. Do you have anything else, sir? Mr. Farrar?
No. The only comment that I would have is that I did get a call from a constituent in town that she, they'd like to see that the board be used in front of the police station. I'm not sure if you use that, that board, that posting block.
I can, if it's available, sure, we can hang the schedule there.
Okay. But, you know, the one right before Mason's and the police station?
Yeah, I, honestly, I don't always think about that one, because I don't even think I have a key to that one, so it's not, it's not one of the ones I.
The bowling one? I always put it up there.
Oh, okay. All right, all right.
Oh, no, you're telling me.
At the police station.
Yeah. I always put it on that one.
The one next to Mason's?
The one next to Mason's?
Yeah.
Okay.
I posted up there.
Okay.
Sometimes I forget to take them down. I think it's still up there right now, but.
The last one? Okay. I usually give her a hard copy anyways to go on the website, so I can give an extra one, I can.
No, that's fine. After I put on the website, I usually copy it on a cardstock, because those, if I don't do cardstock, the paper kind of curls.
Absolutely.
They have no comments or anything? Anybody from the public have anything? No? Zoom? Nope. Nope. Okay.
All right, so I'll make a motion to allow the town clerk to decrease the number of hours for early voting for the election in November.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich I Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Next thing on the agenda, vote, vote for acceptance of the state grant in the amount of $11,542 for the Lucy Stone Park Educational Interpretation Project. So do you have any?
Yes, do you think, yes. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. In your packets tonight, you should, or the, is the original, the original's with me? Do you, do you?
Yeah, they each have a copy.
They each have a copy, okay.
And on the bet, on the last page is.
Is the budget?
Yes. On the last page of their, of their, me too.
So in your packets tonight, you'll have the supporting documents for the grant. The town was awarded a state grant in the amount of $11,542, which is 70% of what the state will reimburse for, of the town. The town has to come up with 30% of the project. So the total project budget was $16,487.53, 70%, which will be covered by the state, and the balance of 49, $4,946.26 will be required to be paid by the town. There has been question as to whether or not the website would be part of the project. I've reached out to Melissa Crane, who's the grants supervisor for this project. She was away this week. We're hoping to get some clarification on that piece of this grant early next week.
So we're doing a matching grant and?
Yep. So I believe this project was sponsored and approved by CDAC, and this was one of the projects that, that was talked about in the committee.
Yep.
I think, you know, right at the time that I was coming on board, and we prepared the, the grant with CMR PC, and it was submitted back in like April or May.
Yeah. Danny.
Danny, yes.
I think we started that on, Danny, what, a time ago, right?
Could have been, yeah.
I think that was the original grant that you had sent, sent me, yeah.
Yeah, that was the first intent of trying to get money for the town.
Yeah.
So the award did finally come down. It came down last week, and we just now got to clear up some of the minor stuff. There may, we need to be a, an article put on special town meeting for, for our matching grant funds to, you know, to increase that. I anticipate that, you know, our line item will need to be increased because of more opportunities that are becoming available that, you know, that the, that the town didn't anticipate for, that we could go after 50% reimbursement, 70% reimbursement on some of these projects that makes sense for the town.
It's no-brainer. Yep. Put in a little money to get a lot of money. It's a win. Do you have any questions, sir?
I do not.
No, sir.
Okay. Anybody from the public have any questions? No? No?
Nobody else, sir?
All right. Motion?
I'll make a motion to vote, I'll make a motion to accept the grant in the amount of $11,542,000 for Lucy Stone Park Education Interpretation Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich I Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Very good.
Thank you.
It's always great to get grants and get more money in.
Uh huh.
It's always a good feeling.
And this will be a nice addition to the park, too.
Yes. Okay, review and discussion of the timeline for submitting articles for the fall special town meeting.
So, Mr. Chairman, in your packets tonight, you'll see that the, there was a memo that was sent out to all departments and boards notifying them that there's a potential date of November 14th as a special town meeting, and that hopefully that date will be confirmed tonight as the next agenda item. But with respect to that, a memo was sent out to all boards and commissions and departments, respectfully requesting that all articles be submitted at your earliest convenience, but no later than October 14th at noon to my office, so that we can prepare those and get those to the finance committee and to the Board of Selectmen for review in a timely manner.
Okay.
This will allow for the time slots to have the proper review and also proper postings.
Good? Yeah, I'm fine with it. Okay. Any questions?
No. I think we have, we've done a good job trying to get everything on schedule. I saw you updated the table.
Yep.
With the goals and requirements, so I think we're in a good shape.
Yeah. Very good. Anybody from the public have any questions? Zoom? Nope. Okay. Motion?
I'll make a motion to hold the special town meeting on Monday, November 14th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich I Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
And that date was also well-received by the town clerk as well. She would prefer that date as well.
And then, we're good with the schedule and what you're going with, like, the article, making sure everything's in there.
In, by the 14th, yep.
Good with the timeline, so. Well, does that be 6:30 and 7 o'clock, right?
No.
No, just 1:00, 7 o'clock. So what, what, yeah, yeah, what was the town clerk recommending? She was thinking like 6, but. I think it should be a little earlier, because, well, even though a special's not typically long, nobody wants to be there till 1:00 and 1:00. Other than Derek. Other than Derek. So I'm good with 6. If you're good with 6? Oh, yeah. Even if, so it's going to be, yeah, it's definitely down by 7, so. 6, 6 o'clock.
And the 6 o'clock?
Very good.
6 o'clock?
All right.
And next thing on the agenda, vote and discussion on setting a date and time for the fall special town meeting. We just did that.
Yep.
So review and discussion of proposed fiscal year 2024, 24 budget calendar. So sort of the next thing.
Yep. So, Mr. Chairman, as we discussed at our last meeting, the budget calendar was in draft form then. There has been some revisions and corrections made, and I wanted to thank Karen for helping lay out the calendar. I think it looks a little bit more easier to read with this in mind, so thank you, Karen. And it kind of, it displays the dates and timelines of events in, in trying to set some guidance as to departments. I anticipate the finance committee is going to take another look at this at their meeting on Tuesday, so if you guys wanted to hold off a little bit and just look at the revisions, that's totally fine. We can look at it at the following meeting, or if you want, if you're comfortable with it, we can move forward with it tonight. It's totally up to you guys. But it sets, you know, the timeline of events, so between now and the end of October, all of our finance departments are very busy, especially the town accountant, with trying to get urine clothes in so that free cash can be certified and submitted to the Department of Revenue for certifications, that our scheduled aid is done correctly and is submitted to the Department of Revenue. And then around November 1st, you know, the board should start looking at and trying to establish next fiscal year's budget guidelines. So is the board going to send out a directive to departments as to a level-funded budget, a 1% increase, a 2% increase? And that, that discussion can be had at the board's level and determine what the, what the Board of Selectmen would really like to see as their vision for next fiscal year's budget. And then in November 15th, December 15th, I would anticipate a memo going out to all departments saying that requests for departmental and capital expenditure requests should be submitted no later than January 5th, so starting the budget season early this year, so in anticipation that we can clear up any, any issues that need to be cleared up, and we can communicate with all departments and boards on, on their requests in a timely manner. And then January 10th, begin the review of budgets submitted by departments and, and department heads and boards, you know, with the finance committee, so to engage with them and, and to start the review. February would be, prepare initial revenue projections for the coming year, working with the accountant and with the treasurer on revenue projections. March 1st, annual town reports due to the Board of Selectmen. This will help the administrative assistant Karen very much with getting these reports early so that she can process them and make sure that they're sent to the right printers on time. March 1st, again, is usually around the time the state legislature and the Department of Revenue issue their first cherry sheet estimates for the following year, so we'll have a good indication as to if local aid has been increased or decreased right around that time period. And then also in March, we'll have a revenue projection for the coming fiscal year in preparation for annual town meeting, so after we get those estimates from the Department of Revenue, to see if there's any new revenue sources, we'll have a, a real good projection of the upcoming revenue for the town. Then towards the end of March, on March 23rd, transmit a copy of the budget and Warren articles together with their recommendations thereto to the Board of Selectmen, and that will be with the FinCom and the, and town administrator. We'll be looking to get those wrapped up. And then on April 3rd would be the, the proposed, the last day to receive petition articles from registered voters, so making sure that we receive those articles in a timely manner so that they can be processed. And then on April 8th, I know last year, the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen met on a Saturday. You know, I don't know if they want to keep with that tradition of meeting on a Saturday to try to accommodate everybody's work schedule. You know, then a Saturday date could be, you know, April 8th and have the recommendations be, be discussed between the Selectmen and the Finance Committee. And then ultimately finalize the, the warrants and get them signed at the April 13th meeting, and then, then FinCom would send the bookout printer to be printed. And then we'd have to post the special town meeting and the annual town meeting and anticipate the annual town meeting on May 9th.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Any questions?
No, I think it's, your observation is, I think it's time to structure the requirements.
Yep.
And making this online, so everybody has access to it, or you have the main.
Yep.
The master one.
Mm-hmm.
And then keep us up to date.
Sure.
So we don't lose track and we don't fall behind.
Yeah, you can, I believe you can create this calendar right under your town administrator and have that set as what the schedule is to do. You can put it under you or under the Selectmen or something, so everybody could see it. So FinCom and everybody knows when it's going on, and if people want to see these meetings, uncertain ones that are public meetings, to view, that they could observe that, too.
Okay. So you want us to put times on the dates?
You don't have to put times.
No, you don't need times, just the date.
Yeah, but if you just say the date that we're doing it, then they'll know, residents will know to look for that, say, hey, they're going to be doing this on this date. That might be something I'm interested in is this.
Yeah, there will be a posting associated. Yeah, there will be a posting associated with these dates as well, because most of these dates require posting notices anyway, so.
Yeah.
So would you like us to put this upon the, this whole thing upon the web page?
I would.
Yeah.
Once FinCom looks at it.
Yeah, once they're good, just post it on there so everybody sees it. But I'm good. Anybody from the public have any questions? Anybody from Zoom?
No.
Okay. So I think we're good and we're all in agreement. Let's do it.
Okay.
All right, establish, establishment of a review committee for the temporary police station lease proposals. So we had to go into a RFP process, correct? And getting proposals. Part of those proposals, they have a committee to review them and put forward the proposals that they would like to see the town move forward towards. So we are doing a five-member committee for this. Three of the individuals are going to be town employees and two of the individuals are going to be the public. So, you know, we're looking for two individuals to volunteer to do the public side. They must be a resident of our town to do this, and they would have to commit to attending some of these meetings. To go over the proposals and do a final presentation to the Board of Selectmen on which proposal they would like the town to go forward with, so. Correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, do you have anything to add?
Um, no, so it's anticipating, it's going to be, the RFP is going to be due back on October thirty-first is when all the proposals are due back into the town accountant's office. So I anticipate the review committee to be ready to meet, you know, either the following days shortly thereafter their submissions, and then ultimately, you know, making a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen shortly thereafter. The RFP calls for a review committee, so this is going in line with what was put out there to the public. And I did receive one email request today from Jim Dusty, who was interested in serving on the committee.
Okay. He would be the, but he would be a town employee. Yes, sir.
I volunteer for the committee.
Very good, thank you very much. Do you have any objections to that?
No.
No, I'm glad to have you volunteer. Thank you very much for your.
Thank you very much for stepping up. Thank you. And again, Mr. Dusty would definitely be a, definitely an individual with a lot of knowledge to be able to do this, knowing buildings and stuff, so that would be great too. And then Chief?
Yes, sir.
You're voluntold.
Yeah. I kind of figured I'd be on that committee.
Don't smile, you're on it too.
Someone else?
I heard that bus coming.
And then Mr. Farrar? Okay. And.
You know, I'm not sure if you want to BJ.
Oh.
Well, then.
We're now exceeding our.
We're exceeding, because now we need to have, well, we got four right here, five, so, but then we need to have somebody from the public. So if we're doing, well, no, three. No.
Well, do.
We got too many town employees.
Can we change it to four and three? Yeah, you could just up the number, make it seven.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
What do you think, seven?
Seven, it's okay, just in case.
You're going to be having a. So we'll do three residents, four town employees, so we'll do a seven-member committee then, because you guys are kind of key on this with your expertise and then having residents, you know, like yourself, have a say in it is key also. The stipulation on that, I would say no residents that are actually putting a proposal forward in front of the committee.
Yeah, exactly.
Should be applying. You have to be separate from it.
Correct.
No attachments, no benefits. So we're looking for people that have nothing to do with any of these proposals in a personal way or financial way. So we're looking for two more residents.
Two more residents, okay.
So we're looking for an email?
Yeah.
Or a letter?
If they can send an email to, you know, Mr. Farrar, the Town Administrator, in their interest, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
And then just, you know, we'll look at the, look at who wants to volunteer, and if we get an abundance of them, we'll just have to choose.
Right.
Yeah. But if we get two more and that's it, that's our board.
All right, so who are we now? So we've got Jim.
So we got Mr. Dusty, both the chiefs, Mr. Farrar.
Okay.
And then.
Jim.
Yep.
Mr. Conrad. BJ should be, well, now we're exceeding our town employees.
No, how many do we?
We have four town employees already.
Well, okay, so unless we count, Jim Dusty is a resident.
He's a town employee. He works for the town.
Okay.
It wouldn't be fair to residents, because we can't, we can't swap back and forth, either he's an employer or he's a resident, unless we can do that pay-wise, right? We're still paying, you know? So it should be residents.
Okay, so, yeah, then you have four without BJ.
And that's, right there, that's all our town employees to do it. So now we need two more residents.
Yeah.
To make the board. You good?
Could you have BJ as a consultant?
You could bring her in if you guys, if the board, because you guys are going to have to, of course, establish a chairman and whatever you're doing, and the chairman runs the meeting, and then you can, if you guys decide to bring in a consultant or whatever to review it.
Because you don't want her to vote on anything if she's going to have to oversee some kind of instruction.
Right.
Yeah.
It's okay.
And she would be the one to best look at and say, hey. Yeah. And I think if you guys needed to do walkthroughs too, to just visually see the buildings.
Yeah.
That's within your purview too. Not yet, Jim?
What's that?
Not yet?
Not yet, no, we're all wondering.
So is it okay if I mention it?
I don't care.
Go ahead.
So Mr. and Mrs. Dusty are waiting for the birth of another grandchild, so they're patiently waiting here to hear the news if the grandchild is born yet. And you still know, but we're a girl. All right, so we got our committee established so far, and we have to vote on that, correct?
So.
To establish it?
Yep.
Okay, so let's do a motion to establish it as a seven-member committee.
All right, so I'll make a motion to establish a review committee for the temporary police station lease RFP proposals. It will consist of four town employees and three citizens.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye. Denny Bennys, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And if anybody would like to be on that committee, send an email to Mr. Farrar. His email address is on the town website under the Town Administrator, or you can, well, probably do an email because. All right. So next thing is to vote to enter into a contract between the town and Pine Ridge Technologies, Inc. for the maintenance of the town's streetlights. Okay, Mr. Farrar?
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your package tonight, you'll see that there's a contract before you for review and authorization. It's for the maintenance of the town-owned streetlights project. Beginning of the summer, the Board of Selectmen had signaled to me that they wanted to go out to bid on the contract that was held by Tanco at the time. The contract was sent out for an RFP, full process, was, came back with a bidder of, a successful bidder of Pine Ridge Technologies, Inc. for the maintenance of streetlights. They've been awarded the contract by the Chief Procurement Officer, Tammy Martin. She did a review of them with regards to their references, with regards to their performance in other communities, and she felt that they were, not only were they the lowest bidder, but they were also qualified to do the projects based on the references that were provided. This contract has been approved to, as to form by Town Council. Their signature is affixed to it. The signature of the town accountant certifying that there's funds available to pay the contract for this fiscal year is been certified, and also that we are in the process of getting the performance bond back to the town for the full, for the potential full three years of the contract. It is a one-year contract with two years optional renewal, but, so the entire contract would be bonded performance-wise as opposed to the last contract where there was no performance bond. It is, it is good to have that there in case the town needs it as protection. This also does also offer liquid damages of a hundred dollars a day that was not in the last contract. That also protects the town. So there is a, it's a pretty well-defined scope of services. It's very customary to what has been done in other communities, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions that they may have.
And the benefit of this is this is a business within our state.
Right.
So it's not a California business where we're getting on the phone and having to call people and go back and forth. It's something that's within our communities here.
Well, basically, Tanco was, was basically like, you know, they were just subbing the work out to local contractors, so.
Third party.
Yeah, so of course, the town is going to save some money by doing this, by going to the direct source, you know, this is the company that will be doing it, the work, so.
And in this contract, we actually have protections to guarantee the works, so. All right, do you have any questions, sir?
Two, can you remind everybody what a performance bond does and what it means?
So it basically, it protects the town for performance, you know, so if, you know, for example, there was a lot of work that went into getting this out to bid, right, and getting the services secured. So a performance bond is, say, for example, if a company was to be neglectful three months down the road and didn't perform the services as rendered in the contract, there's money there that we can tap into that go after the, you know, the bonding company to get the performance money for the town.
So if we had to cancel the contract, we could use some of that money.
Correct.
To get.
Hire somebody.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
To do the work.
Okay.
In the intro.
So my other question is, so Appendix A.
Appendix A, yeah.
They have a cost breakdown?
Yes.
So is this our monthly cost, eighteen hundred eighty-one?
Correct, so eighteen eighty-one is the maximum, well, is the maximum potential cost per fixture, you know, if there was, if there was no fixtures that needed to be replaced, then the monthly cost would be eight eighty-eight.
Oh, okay, all right. So that's our base cost.
Base cost, and then if you have to do, if you have to buy equipment, you know, the price increases, and then obviously, if there's an emergency response, there's an additional charge to that as well.
So what does the eight eighty-eight cover?
It's a routine maintenance replacement, so, you know.
A bulb goes out, or, okay. But if they have to actually replace the whole thing.
Thing, then there's, you know, on the photo cells, you know, they would have to charge, the replacement of the whole LED fixture, you know, there's a charge for that.
Okay, all right.
And they're actually going out and doing the inspections, checking the lights, making sure that they're working too.
Yeah, there's a, there's a reporting process in the RFP as well, so that they have to report to us, and then there's also a mechanism in there where they also have to notify, you know, they also have to notify the town of any emergency services or anything that there's, that needs to be repaired. There's got to be a basic batch, routine maintenance batch that will, they'll compile lists and give to, email it to the Town Administrator on lists that they had to repair, you know, a batch of streetlights, you know, so if it was three or four, whatever, or ten streetlights, they have to, you know, they have to submit those batches.
Any other questions?
No.
There's an online reporting mechanism or program. Town employees in the community must be able to report streetlights in need of repair through the use of an online reporting mechanism or program.
So we could actually post that on our website too? So if a resident finds a streetlight that's out, instead of just calling us, they report it right to them.
Mm-hmm, it's all in the specifications of the bid that was, that was set out. So this, this contract has a lot more protections in the town than the previous contract and allows for termination very clearly defined in here at an hour if they're not adhering to the contract.
Very good. Do you have any questions, sir?
No, I think it's part of the process, I'm okay.
Okay. Do you have anything else you'd like to add? Anybody from the public have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Jim Dusty, the custodian.
If you could just come forward, Mr. Dusty.
Just a quick question. I'll speak loudly. I'm Jim Dusty, the custodian. Jim, I wonder if you mentioned, is there a materials cost and is there an inventory being held somewhere on-site in town? So, or is that part of the cost structure? There are always parts and materials that are used to replace parts or repair parts on the poles.
So these, these, this company has fixtures that they charge the town per fixture, so there's no, there's no, there's no backup of inventory. They have, they're responsible for it.
Is that built into their maximum fee schedule for the various types of repairs?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Was it photo cells installed per fixture, a hundred and sixty-five dollars?
Replacement of an LED fixture.
Three hundred and five dollars.
So they have, they have a, they have a, from a, from the last contractor, they had a list of streetlight inventory. So that list of streetlight inventory and the Cobra Heads that the town has was published as part of the RFP and was made available to everybody so they know what type of streetlights we have in town, so that they, they would have to have that inventory to replace those. to replace those.
Any other questions? Answer your questions, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Anybody in Zoom? Nope? Okay. Motion?
I'll make a motion to accept and sign the agreement between the town and Pine Ridge Technologies, Inc., for the maintenance of streetlights in town.
Second?
All in favor? Rich Iharker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, next thing, discussion and possible vote on the use of the Cornerstone Bank donation. You know, I, I gave some proposals on what to do, if, you know, you guys are good with that. My, my thing is, is it should be going back to the community in ways that we can use it in the community. It shouldn't be going towards fixing a door, or painting a wall, or something like that in the building, but it should be going back to where the residents are enjoying the money and utilizing this. So, you know, I was looking at doing $5,000 to Veterans Council, $9,500 to the Senior Center, $10,000 to Parks and Recreation, $1,000 to baseball, $1,000 to soccer, $1,000 to football, $1,000 to cheer. These are all town things that all our residents enjoy in one capacity or another. And I would say, do these as a gift account, so they can go into these things and use these funds. For the, the equipment or whatever they need to do for that. So, if that's a possibility.
Well, I know the Veterans Council already has a gift account, right?
Yep.
I, I'm not sure if these other entities have gift accounts, but if they, if they don't have a gift account, then, then a gift account would have to be created by the board, or by that, or by asking them, right?
Usually, the sports, they get $500 every year?
Yes.
That's built into the budget.
It's a budget thing.
So, this is separate?
Separate, yeah.
They, I don't think they have an account or anything?
No, and, and with the budget one, they actually have to do, they would have to basically look up what they would need, so they'd have to find a price, identify that to Tammy, and say, this is what I'd like to purchase, and Tammy could either do the purchase for them, or then, if they want, they can actually purchase it and get a reimbursement. So, they could do it either way. That's how the $500 is being used. But what I'm looking at is if we can create something where it's more flexible for them, like a gift account, where they can actually, oh, say, uniforms for the kids, or veterans, Veterans Council wants to use for the Reeds Across America, or say, scholarships, or whatever they do, they have the control of that money, like we created for them already. The purpose of the money is getting it out to them so they can use it.
In any way they see fit.
In any way they see fit. Sometimes, we're a little over-restrictive on how we use the money, and it's not used at all, because sometimes going through the process is harder than just getting the money, you know? So, that's what I was thinking. If you guys have any suggestions or different proposals, or anything like that?
No, I think it's fine.
Yeah, I think it's good. Hopefully, we don't miss anybody there.
Yeah, and like, you know, again, Veterans Council, we want to make sure they get some money to do their thing. Senior Center, you know, I know they got some things that they want to take care of. This would give them opportunities to purchase some things that they normally wouldn't get through the budget process or through grants. You know, same thing with parks, you know? Baseball, you know, it's, it's smaller, it's only $1,000, but it goes a long way for kids, you know, so... Okay.
You know, because, I don't know if, if these other departments have gift accounts. You, you may want to consider, you know, if you've identified these departments, that you, you may want to have them send you, instead of creating all these various gift accounts, have them, have these departments establish, saying that you've been awarded, you know, these amounts of money, and come up with projects, and to submit your projects to the Board of Selectmen, and you'll approve the money out of your gift account, because your gift account's unrestricted use.
Sure?
Can you do it that way?
I mean, I, instead of creating all the, you know, I, I, no, no. Then they can come in front of you and present their project, and...
So, they have a credit? You have a credit?
Credit. For, for, if these are the accounts that, you know, these are the departments you want to award the money to.
And then, if they don't come forward, you still have the money?
I like that. Sounds good.
Well, so, Veterans Council already has an account. Senior Center?
I'm not sure.
And Parks, probably not? Okay. All right, so basically, on this...
We could, we could put the, we could put the $5,000 for Veterans Council into their account.
Yeah.
We could, we know they have, right?
Right.
So, we could put one in, that one in their gift account, and the rest of them, they're earmarked.
Yeah.
These amounts are earmarked for these...
So, we'll just need to keep track as people spend their credit? Just keep track of their balance?
That's easy.
Stretching. You got it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm good with it.
All right, so what is the motion? Just to list these amounts for who they're for?
So, I, I would...
Do the Veterans Council separate?
Yeah, I would, I would do the Veterans Council separate, and then, I would, you know, say that you, the, the, out of the selectmen gift account, unrestricted gift account, that you've earmarked these projects for those amounts of money.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion. Hmm, okay.
Do the, do the veterans first?
Yeah, I know, but how are we saying this? Transfer money?
Say that you, you're, you've, you've earmarked $9,500 to the Senior Center for a project out of the selectmen's...
No, it's not to the Veterans Council.
Transfer the amount to $5,000 to Veterans Council gift account.
Okay, all right.
Unrestricted gift account, yeah.
All right, so, I'll make a motion to transfer from the Cornerstone Bank donation to the Veteran Council gift account.
Unrestricted, unrestricted gift, gift account.
Gift account, $5,000.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Iharker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I make a motion to earmark out of the Cornerstone Bank donation the following unrestricted funds for use by the following departments. $9,500 for the Senior Center, $10,000 for Parks and Recreation, $1,000 to baseball, $1,000 for soccer, $1,000 for football, and $1,000 for cheerleading.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Iharker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. There you go.
All right.
They got their department, they got their monies now. Yeah. We got to notify them now.
So, yeah, so we notify them, and then, do you want to see them before you, you know, before you physically award the money to the department? Do you want to hear their project, or...
Oh, when they do have a project?
Yeah, so, you know, if the Senior Center has a project for $9,500, do you want to hear about it? Do you want to, do you want to talk about it beforehand, or you just want to...
No, I think it's their money.
Okay.
Well, maybe just send us a letter or an email?
What they spending on?
Okay.
Yeah, just so we know.
Pretty boring.
Okay.
All right.
But I don't think we need to pull them in front, because they could take a while for, you know, us to get them in here and stuff, and they might have something. You know, the Senior Center might sit there and say, hey, that would be great money to spend.
Fixing their ovens.
On something, yeah, yeah, but...
Their money.
It, it's their money, they can use it however they want. It, it's just like, you know, those are things that we can get a town meeting, you know, repairs and stuff like that.
I know, I was just saying an example.
Yes, it, it, yeah, if they want to spend it to fix their ovens, they can. But it's their money to do their thing, for their, their population, their seniors, or, you know, any of the departments. They just don't want us being overly restrictive, again, where it becomes a burden for them to do it. You know, because that's, been watching with, like, I know that some of the sports stuff, nobody's claiming the money. Nobody's getting that $500. It's $500. The only ones that have asked about it were football. And that's it. And I don't even know if...
Baseball. Baseball got theirs last year.
Baseball got theirs?
They're the only ones that did last year.
Okay. But football, I know, was asking about it this year, and how to do it, and I put them in contact with Tammy.
Yeah, I told the soccer club, too, and they were trying to come out with a receipt close to $500 to, to, to get it.
Well, doesn't have to be the full $500.
Yeah, I know.
It could be any amount, you know?
Less than $500.
No, even if it's over, we will pay them only $500, but the receipt could be...
Okay, that'll make it easier, because I think they, every year, they go crazy trying to do it like a close to $500.
No, even if it's over...
We'll give them a portion of that $500.
Okay.
Yeah?
Here we go, soccer.
Yeah, you know, use it, did, now the town gave that money for these things, because they believe in them. And I know, talked with some people, they're like, oh, it's so difficult to get, and said, well, you know the process. No, I didn't even know it was there. You know? Each of these teams already have, but, well, the only one I don't think has anything is cheerleading.
That's football chairs, so, no.
It's football chair combined?
I believe so.
Yeah.
All right.
David, could you excuse me one second?
Yes, sir.
Hello? Okay, all right, wait. Okay, all right, wait. May I interrupt for one second? Travis, can you come downstairs, please?
The sound? The sound, the sound?
The sound is loud.
Yeah, the footsteps.
Yes. Sit down in front.
What you doing now?
I, I don't know, that's what I'm wondering about.
Derek has something up his sleeve.
Yeah, that, that's a little concerning.
What's going on, yeah?
Oh, baby. She's good, I haven't had dinner yet.
So, we got some hoopoes as well. You got us pizza the other day?
Is it biscotti, piccaccio?
Piccaccio, yeah. Thank you to Piccaccio. So, please help yourself.
Do we have lights?
Oh, wait, oh, wait, so we have to take a break?
Yeah, we'll finish up here, and then...
So, it's going to be here? All right. I, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Move through quickly so we could eat.
There we go.
Comments, I won't talk too much.
I'll hold you to it.
Okay. You're up, sir.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. Number 27 Payroll, $47,522.88. Number 28 Vendor, $373,948.92. Number 29 Payroll, $48,557.35. Number 30 Vendor, $28,939.82.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Iharker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to pay the following bills. WB Mason, $41.07.
$41.01.
No, that's what I'm saying, it's seven.
Oh.
Sorry.
Northeast IT, $120. BG, $1,519. KP Law, $2,405.86. Mirac O'Connell, $4,405. Modern Pest Services, $92. Amazon, $55.50. Easy True Value, $47.96. Kelco, $299.87. C2MA Adams, $857.62. National Grid, $150.83. Verizon, 842. Marlin Printer Leasing, $1,107.23. Witco Sales, $1,024.99. C2MA Adams Streetlights, $1,164.25. Comcast, $20.26.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Iharker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, next thing, I have to do this one. This is a bill for Joyce Iharker, and Rich, you're recusing yourself?
I recuse myself.
Okay. And... This is for the payment of the Zuma account in the amount of $15.93.
Second?
Okay, all, um, all in favor?
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. With Miss Iharker recusing herself. Uh, next thing on the agenda, minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from September 1st, 15th, and 19th, 2022.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Iharker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously for the minutes. Okay, next thing on the agenda, new business. Do you have any new business?
I do not.
No, sir?
Do we have any new business? I have nothing. Mr. Ferrara?
I'll just try to report, huh?
Okay. Sorry. You hear that? A little deaf there, chief? Get the radio up? All right. Old business? Any old business?
I do not.
No, sir?
Karen, you got anything? Okay. Town Administrator Report. Mr. Ferrara, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, members of the board and department heads, special town meeting is going to be November 14th. Encourage all of the departments to get their warrant articles in at their earliest convenience by simply emailing me, a memo has, has been sent out. FinCom has two posted meetings that are going to be coming up in, in October to review, and we look forward to getting those articles to the Board of Selectmen at the earliest time possible. Very important to stay on time. Next week is a busy week in, in Town Hall, municipal building. We have two presentations, well, one's a, an interview and collection of information, but the other one is a presentation. We have a software company called QDS Point and Zombria, which is a, is one company now under QDS that offer two other softwares, Points and Zobrio. And they're going to be making a presentation on core tax collection software, assessing software, cash management, accounting and budgeting, and permitting, or permitting. They are going to start the presentation, they're going to be here on Wednesday, starting at 9:30. Their timeline and agenda is in your packets, and what they're going to be spending the timeline on. They're going to be going through all of their modulators for the software that they offer, and this will also help us understand if we are successful with the IT grant, you know, to help us... know, to help us understand, you know, the software products that are, that are out there for smaller communities as well. You know, we saw one of the software, for permitting software, not too long ago with the planning board, Permitize. This is another competitor that offers another modular called Permitlink, but also offers the accounting software, the assessing software, the tax collecting software, and the cash management software, all in, under one umbrella. So the memo had went out to departments to please come by, and they're going to be doing onsite presentation, or you could also join in by phone or Zoom link as well.
Now, with that, because that's a four-hour presentation, is there any chance we can have it identified when certain portions are going to be addressed?
It's on your, your sheet, next page.
Next page is the agenda.
Well, I guess you just answered my question?
Thank you.
Very good.
Well, I come right for lunch.
And then the next day, Thursday, October 6th, Department of Revenue is going to be coming in to, to conduct their analysis of the fiscal operations in town. This was part of a grant that the town had received some years ago, that wasn't completed because the town didn't have town administrator at the time, and probably also because during COVID as well. So they are scheduled to come here next Thursday, starting at 9:00 AM. We're going to be on Monday sending out time slots for departments to sign up for times to meet with their representatives from the DOR. The department heads have asked to go earlier in the morning. I know the accounting office is jam-packed with doing their year-end close, so they respectfully asked to go at 10 o'clock that morning. They're going to be coming in at 9:00, they want to meet with me directly. At 10:00, they'll meet with the accountant, and then afterwards, they will meet with other department heads, and they would like to meet on that day as well, with members of the Board of Selectment individually. And so they don't want, so there's no issue of speaking freely, or issue of having a quorum. They would like to meet individually with each member of the board privately, so they will like to do that, their interviews of the Board of Selectment in the afternoon. So anticipate an email coming out on Monday with time slots.
Okay. Very good.
This week on Wednesday, I had the opportunity to meet with the school's new school superintendent, as well as Mr. Duff, and Mr. Schwanker, and the facilities manager at the school. We spoke about the Green Communities Grant that was awarded, that the town put in for, and the town was working with, Mr. Castigian, before he had left the town, was working with some representatives from CMRPC, and also Guardian Energy Management Services, to apply for a Green Communities Grant. There was a commitment that was made by the former superintendent, that he really wanted to see this energy management system in the elementary school. And so the town forwarded and completed the application at their request. The town was subsequently awarded the application a few weeks ago for $200,000. But the whole total project is $400,000. So I know that there's, there's anticipated some energy credits of, of somewhere between $40,000 to $50,000, but there is going to be a need for a level of commitment from, from schools as to, you know, what they want to, how they want to fund the balance. And that, that was a discussion that we started to have with superintendent, she's new, that we wanted to make it very clear that we're going to need some support, some level of support to, to make this grant possible, and to make this award possible. And, you know, they, their concerns were, because they were reduced of their above minimum, and they had to make cuts, that there's, money is not available for this, so they want to have a further discussion. They've, you know, they inquired me to go out for an RFP, but, I mean, we can definitely do that, and it's a long process, but if we, you know, we need to have some type of level of commitment from them, you know, if they're going to want to really have this grant, to, to know whether or not they, you know, they will budget for the money, or have the money in, in some type of reserves.
So they want to, they want us to continue with the process, but they're not making a commitment?
On the money, financially, yeah, yeah. And so I, I wanted, I want to make sure that this is clear, before we move forward with anything, that the financial support is there, because the state will pull the money if there's no financial support.
Yeah. Yeah, we definitely need to get that commitment from them, so they can, it doesn't make sense for us to move forward and put all the effort and go through a whole process, for them to pull it out the last minute and say no.
Right. They had a, they had a, a level of support from the previous administration, you know, back in the spring, since the times have changed, since after annual town meeting, they've, they've readdressed their, and reassessed their, their, their position, and it was kind of clear that they don't really have the money. So I don't know if they're going to be planning to, to do something for it, or, or planning to, to, you know, work out something in their budget committee, but we're going to need to know relatively soon, you know, how we're, you know, going to handle this.
Okay. You guys just keep us updated on what they decide.
And then also, this week, I also attended a sewer commissioners' meeting, and at the, at the point of the sewer commissioners' meeting, it was brought up as, as a topic of collectibles, and one of the collectibles for sewer bills was fiscal years 2015 to 2017's Quaid Bog Regional School District owes some sewer bills in, in excess of $28,000 plus interest for fiscal year 15, 16, and 17. I have a memo here from the tax collector. I did indicate this to the superintendent and to the chairman of the school committee, and, you know, kind of, you know, kind of to gauge them as to what their process are, was, they, they instructed me that they applied for an abatement, but the abatement was denied, so theoretically, you have to pay the bill, and bills are not being paid.
Do they intend to pay the bills?
They, they, they suggested speaking to their legal counsel.
Okay, but they paid them since that time?
Correct.
For the full time?
Correct.
It's just these three, what makes these three years different?
Well, they, they had indicated to me that they felt that the process in which they were assessed the bills, they felt that it wasn't a fair and correct process, so they only paid a portion of these bills, and they still owe a portion, and the bills that they owe a portion of is totals $28,523.88.
Has the process to assess their sewer bill changed?
I, I don't believe it has. It's the same process, right?
So they should just pay the, I mean, I don't know what legal standing they would have.
Right, they've, they've been paying it now, they paid it previously, they're paying it again.
And the process hasn't changed.
The process hasn't changed.
Yeah.
Then why would you fight it on these three years? If you'd not, if you're going to fight it, fight it the whole time.
Right.
Well, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, because I'm assuming at some point, the Department of Revenue is going to ask the town, have they made every effort to collect for unpaid bills? And I, I realize that this is a, an enterprise fund, and I realize that it, it won't have an impact on, on free cash, but at some point, it is an uncollectible, and, you know, something has to be done.
So what are the alternatives if they don't pay it?
Well, I mean, the sewer commissioners, you know, are really upset about this from, you know, from the meeting that they had, and, you know, they had mentioned some vast things, but I mean, you know, I, I would caution them as to, you know, any type of shut-off would be, you know, would be a public health crisis, and you can't do that, you just legally can't do that. So, you know, you have to work with the, with the, with the school committee, and with their budget team to try to get these addressed, you know, they have to work them in their budgets to pay their bills.
Okay. Was it already in their budget in 15, 16, and 17? And they didn't pay the bills, which meant they had that much more money?
They paid a portion of the bills.
Yeah, yeah, right, understood.
But if they budgeted for the full thing, and they didn't pay them?
Yeah, right.
Where'd that money go? So there's, exactly $28,500 something dollars unaccounted for.
Correct.
Did we get our three years' worth of reports?
I have not received those yet.
We still haven't received the audit that was just done?
Correct.
Yeah, that was, that's what I'm referring to, right? We were supposed to get three years?
They said they were going to email them all, but I.
Oh, can you ask again for that?
Yeah.
I didn't see anything here. Nothing from you?
Okay.
Okay, just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
Thank you.
Did you have any questions?
No, sir?
So also this week, the bids came back for the grid screw project at the sewer plant. There was two bids that were submitted. One was from AK Industrial for $198,800, and the other one was from Pride Environmental Construction for $272,621.
The bid spread.
So. So as I, yeah, as I had indicated, you know, a few weeks ago, it is getting real tough out there in terms of getting quotes, you know, estimating, prices have just gone up drastically, and, I mean, you know, Tian Bond anticipated this project yet, you know, a few months ago at a $129,000, $130,000 project, you know, I called the Tian Bond a few weeks ago, and they, they increased it to $145,000. So now, now.
Nobody's even close to that.
Nobody's even close to that, so now we have to anticipate, if, if the board wants to move forward with the project, you know, we're going to have to increase the amount of use of our funds for, for the project.
We don't really have much choice. It has to be fixed.
Right.
We need to get it done.
And it's just going to keep on getting more expensive.
Yeah.
Right, if we don't do it now, then it's just going to get worse.
Next year, it could be $250,000.
Yeah.
The lowest bid.
Yeah.
So Tian Bond is reviewing the references, this is, this is just the preliminary of what the, the raw numbers came back, so they are checking references, making sure that there's no complaints lodged against any of these companies by the state, and then they will make a recommendation shortly thereafter. So that's where we are with that project. I'm sure that, you know, you're going to see this type of, you know, action happening, you know, it's, it's just the way the, the economy is right now, it's, it's very tough to, to find qualified individuals bidding on, on smaller projects that, you know, when there's other projects out there that are multimillion-dollar projects, that bigger companies are looking to go for, you know, instead of trying to get a smaller project in the area, so it, it's tough, it's, it's very, very tough out there. I do also want to mention that the tablets, thank you Derek for your assistance on the tablets, they were, they went live this week, they're, they're up in every municipal building. People have gotten their PIN codes, with the exception of the highway department, they will be getting their codes on Monday. Everybody else has gotten their codes, and the system's been up and running. So it's a learning curve, it's a learning process. You don't expect 100% perfection, believe me, but, you know, it's just, it's one step at a time, and it's a step in the right direction, and it's for emergencies, you know, in case we need to notify anybody who's in the building in an emergency, it's there.
Are people using it?
Yes.
Okay, good, so your buy-in rate is?
It was just, it just rolled out two days ago, so.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
But it's, you know, people have needed it.
Okay, good.
You missed one.
And, well, I wanted to say that I, I'm sure the chief was going to mention something about that in this report.
Okay.
For the interviews? Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yep. Any questions?
There anyone?
No, sir?
Anybody from the public, questions? Anybody from Zoom?
No.
Okay, moving on. All right, comments and concerns? Do we have any comments and concerns? Yes, sir? Come on up.
Mr. Farrar? Chairman, what, Chief, please? I said three things real quick. One, at the next meeting, you guys need to set a date for Halloween, any time?
Yes.
Actually, you should probably do that tonight.
I don't know if you had to put it on the.
I didn't.
And then, next question was, I know we talked about phones, is that still a thing that we're looking at as new?
Oh, voice phones?
Yeah.
Yes, but it's running into some issues.
Yeah, so the, the phone system, because if, if the town was to move in the direction of a voice-over IP, we would have to upgrade the internet speed first in order to do that.
Yeah.
We're at a very, very slow megahertz for capacity and speed, so that, that would have to be addressed first before we could move forward with that. In terms of the phones here in the building, we do have access to some refurbished phones that have been working.
Yeah, the only reason I was asking is because I was possibly going to start looking for a new one for my place, because that's what I have, is voice-over IP. So I'm not happy with the service I have right now. And then my last thing was, recently, the board had voted for the Board of Health to go into a regional collaboration with the Department of Public Health. It's called the Mill Towns Public Health Coalition. I was just asking to see if we can look into, and Chief Will Boyle will back me up on this, a lot of our calls that my guys deal with is mental health, and we're not mental health clinicians, we're cops, and I just want to see if this is something that we could tap into, where maybe we can get a mental health clinician out of working with the Board of Health that can help us deal with some of the issues that the town residents have.
So like an on-call person that?
Correct.
If you have a call, and it relates to something?
Right, I know a lot of big cities, they have the, the funds to have their own clinician, and obviously, it's a full-time job for them, or little towns like us, it's not a full-time job, we don't have the money to, to hire these people, but if the regional collaboration that's a grant-funded, I don't know if that's something we can look into.
That could be somebody we get for nine years, because it's for nine years. So potentially get you somebody, a clinician that you can call on to deal with some mental health issues, and that person could address those with you.
Right.
They, at that time, my understanding is they would actually be a town employee when they're here, even though they're a regional employee, they would be a town employee when they're working for us. Special town.
Special town employee.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
I could get, look at what other PDs do too, and see if that's something I can get from them, and maybe work with Mr. Farrar and the Board of Health on this.
So the, under that grant, they're going to be, the, the host community, Palmer, is going to be hiring the coordinator, and the coordinator is going to be responsible with sending, you know, one of those clinicians as, as part of their services that they were going to specialize in, along with they're going to also have additional staff for food inspection services, and, and some other health-related matters, so that, that could be a possibility that you could tap into that grant.
Does you, anything?
In the meantime, if you have really a need, we can talk a little bit. Half of our staff is mental health. And they do all the time, you know, telehealth.
I think you're looking for somebody, so if you have somebody that's having some issues.
It might not rise to us having a section.
It's not a criminal thing. It's not something that's, well, it's a concern because, you know, again, the person might be thinking to hurt themselves or whatever else, and this clinician could talk to them.
And then follow up, learn through.
Right, and follow up later on.
Right.
Yeah, we do all that all the time, especially for, you know, people who try to.
Yeah, this, this grant would pay for it all, though, in a regional thing.
Yeah, what I'm, no, what I'm saying is, meanwhile, we get to the grant, I could get somebody to help you in that matter while we get the grant, 'cause I don't, I don't think it would be appropriate to pay for something that is behind me, you know, it will be conflict of interest. But for me, to you now, we can get somebody there. If you need anybody, I, you know, I can, I can talk into the company and I'm, I'm sure they.
I think they would have to be brought on as a special town employee. We'd have to hire them.
Yeah, and there, you did have to be some type of insurance and everything for them to, you know, this is all done.
That's great, I think that's our.
Collaboration, it's all, all included, yeah.
But I like your thinking. I, I just don't know if we could do that legally.
No, it'd be tough.
Chief, did you have any input on this?
Uh.
Do you wanna come forward, please?
Yeah, sure.
How do you feel about having somebody consult for mental health? You guys are working in the ambulances and you don't want a lot of.
You know, this, I don't think there's any secret that, I don't think there's any secret that, you know, in our society that we're dealing with more of those calls, certainly on a regular basis. So, you know, that, that has become something that, you know, we're seeing a huge increase in percentages, and it, and it spans all age groups. We spend, you know, considerably more time even in the elementary schools and stuff now, dealing with children that have behavioral or mental health issues. So it's certainly something to be addressed. Any, I think, any and all avenues that we could look in and go down, I think, should be exhausted, so that, you know, I think that people, you know, I, I think people have a hard time, you know, as they see us dealing with some people sometimes, and, and, you know, they may interpret things, you know, the wrong way, or they may interpret things in different ways sometimes. So, you know, we, we wanna give that individual that's called, that, that they may need, be in crisis and may need help, every option they can have, so that they can avoid being, you know, you know, dealing with law enforcement or dealing with us for that matter. We can have someone that can come in and, and, and help resolve that situation without going down a certain road. That's obviously what the intention we wanna have. I mean, we don't want anyone hurt. We don't wanna cause any further harm to anybody that may be in crisis or something. So, you know, having a clinician or something, somebody available, and especially an outreach program after an incident occurs, you know, that would be, I think that would be good for all parties, to be honest.
No, I think it's a great idea.
I do too. Derek?
I support everything you're, you're talking. It's good.
Mr. Farrar, you have any concerns about it?
No, I think it's a great opportunity to work with that new grant.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing to do.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Okay, all right, all right, Chief. We'll have to get a meeting together with the Board of Health and stuff.
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good initiative. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments and concerns?
I was gonna bring up the Halloween thing, 'cause I'm already starting to get the phone calls on our end too, so I don't know if that wants to be put on the next agenda, but, you know, the board will have to set something.
That's not until the thirteenth, though.
When, when are the possible dates? So we.
Well, it's always, it's always on Halloween. You know, it's always that. It's more the time.
Westbrookfield's doing it on Halloween. Everybody's doing it Halloween.
Well, that's what we've done in the past. So I've been, I think it's five to seven.
Usually that's, yeah, usually it's five to seven. I think they've gone as early as four-thirty one time, but I, normally it's about five to seven. I think you could look back in the previous times that have been set at, at other meetings, but I believe it's five to seven, and I know that the.
That's what it was last year.
I talked to Jim McKeon earlier today. He messaged me, asking if I had heard anything from the board. I told him I would bring it up this evening. But they are planning on their, the, we usually do the thing at the fire station. We do a costume judging contest. They have a, a live DJ at the, the park in West Warren there on the parade route. So they were looking to do all of those things as usual. He did mention to me that they were not doing the haunted house up here this year due to a conflict with the elections, I believe. So he did, he did tell me that.
That thing was awesome.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, you know, I know he's on tonight. I, I, he told me that there was a conflict with reserving the gym, and that's why there wasn't enough time for them to, to set up or, or, or break it down because of the election.
So Sutoh Laurie, that they were only going to do it on non-election years.
Okay.
I think he just.
Is there someplace else we can do it?
I don't, I, I think Jim just, Jim, are you signing on?
Jim McKeon. You there? Is he on?
He's there about, there was noise coming out of the speaker, but.
He's having some technical issues, that could be. Well, let's handle the Halloween first.
What about like Highway Barn or?
I don't think.
They would never be able to move out the equipment they have in here, you know? I mean, I'd love to volunteer a station, but we just, we can't do that either. It's just, it's just too much stuff.
I think Jim's ready to talk.
Jim, you there? McKeon?
You hear anything?
Yeah, we can hear you.
So we're looking at.
Hey, yeah, usually.
It's loud.
There it is.
You there?
All means usually.
I think we're running into technical issues with you, Jim. Do you have any other place that you can do the, the haunted house?
I mean, uh. Trick or trunk?
Trunk or treat. Oh, they do something.
Yes, he did mention the trick or trunk, or trunk or treat, I should say, at the elementary school too. I don't know if he's.
Doing that quite a while. No.
Uh, oh, that's right, they did move it to.
They did a little haunted house there.
They did do a haunted house there.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. They did combine, that's right, that's, that's right.
The students did a good job. That was done by the students.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see if we can work something out.
And usually. And usually with trick or treat, it's from five to six-thirty, and then the parade usually at six-thirty.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
It's usually always six-thirty.
I'll say I had the best class tomorrow, too.
Yeah.
So trick or treating's from five to six-thirty?
Yeah, that's, that, yes.
Yes.
The parade usually starts in West Warren at six-thirty. The whole event usually runs through seven o'clock. But yes, he's correct. The parade usually starts at six-thirty, so it'll be five to six-thirty for trick or treating itself.
Okay. Is that gonna be enough time?
I mean, that's what we've done in the past, so.
It starts getting really dark after that.
Yeah.
And sometimes very cold.
I mean, it's an hour and a half of trick or treating. That's a lot. You can like hit Warren and West Warren.
That's what we do.
It's a lot of candy.
Yeah.
Keep those, keeping those dentists employed.
They never come to my house, though.
No?
And I put a big bowl of candy out every year.
They never get them in my house either.
Well.
Yeah.
We live in Bootyville. I live in town.
Bootyville.
I'd be wondering if I, if somebody came up my driveway. Yes, sir.
I usually get about two hundred and fifty, and I live on a dead-end street.
Very good. Do you do big candy bars? Because I gotta know if I'm coming here or not.
I do, I do Kit Kats.
The big ones or the little ones?
The little ones.
You could have two or three.
Two or three of them?
Only the little kids.
Come to my. Come to my house, I just put the bowl out.
All right.
So five to seven, right? Five to six-thirty.
Five to six-thirty, and then six-thirty.
To seven.
To.
Parade will start in West Warren.
Yeah, well, how long does it last now?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it usually takes about an hour. But I mean, the parade will actually commence on North Street and then go down to, to the fire station.
So you can do five to six-thirty trick or treating, and six-thirty parade starts.
Yeah.
So this great covers it.
I believe the thirty-first is on a Monday.
It is. Yeah. Okay. Let's vote on it. We don't need to have it on the agenda. It's.
All right, I'll make a motion to have, to set the Halloween hours for October thirty-first, trick or treating from five to six-thirty, and the parade starting at six-thirty.
Second?
All in favor?
Richac or aye?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. Motion passed to you in a second. We know when trick or treating is now. All right. Thank you, guys. All right. No other comments and concerns? From anybody? Yes, sir.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
So Derek posted something last week, so he kinda gets the credit for this, but a big kudos to Breezlin Orchards, that were voted the best cider donuts in Central Mass, right? It was, yeah, Central Mass.
That's, that's big. There's a lot of places that do the cider donuts and do apple orchards and stuff.
Twenty, twenty farms on that list.
Yep.
And they were number one.
Well, they aren't the best.
They are the best.
Yeah.
They're so, they're like addictive. They're good. Especially, even when you get them the day after and you microwave them for a little bit, and you get, ah, they're so delicious.
She said, she wrote me back, Breezy Lance, and she said, after this was published, we have been selling out of donuts. It's the greatest fear that I've ever had.
Awesome, man.
I know. I went there the other day and I grabbed the last package, and somebody came out and goes, ah. I go, sorry.
Nope.
Come on.
Well, get them while they're hot and available.
Yep.
Right when they're out. Those are the best.
Oh, yeah. They're still good even after the next day.
And they usually don't make it home at our house.
Yeah. I don't know who'd eat those donuts. Yeah, congratulations to Breezlin's. Awesome job.
Good job.
Yep. And thank you for providing such a delicious treat to our town. All right. Anything else?
No.
Did you have anything?
No, sir.
That's right. Okay. Anybody else? Anybody from Zoom? Comments and concerns?
No, it's only Jim. We wouldn't be able to hear him anyway, so.
All right. All right, so now we're onto the fire department report for August. Chief, you're up again.
Oh, you didn't, you.
You didn't, yeah. Oh, yes, yes. Good evening, Animal Boy Fire Chief. Probably said that, should've said that before I was speaking before. Apologies. Month of August report, we responded to twenty-eight fire incidents in two thousand, in August two thousand twenty-two. It ranged from activated alarms, motor vehicle accidents, medical assists, electrical issues, mutual aid, which are seeing a huge increase in. Canceled calls, service calls, structure fires, vehicle fires, and rescue or extrications. Ambulance, we had a very busy month, sixty-eight calls in August of two thousand twenty-two. There were five ALS intercepts required. We are on target once again to blow our statistics out of the water again this year already, so we just keep, our call volume just continues to rate, to rise every year. So it's, you know, it's, it's always tough to keep everything going, but, you know, so far we've caught up with, or we're keeping up with all the calls. Several inspections, including smoke and carbon monoxide inspections, four propane tank inspections. We do a wide variety of inspections, the smoke and carbon monoxide. You know, anytime a house, I think I mentioned it before, anytime a property is transferred or sale is done in town, we're required to go in by law to conduct a smoke and carbon monoxide inspection to make sure that the detectors are in place and they are functioning properly so that that sale is transferred and it's, and it's a safe property to have it. Some of the activities and meetings, we held a couple trainings on the fire side of things, which consisted of some truck equipment checklists and maintenance, as well as air pack confidence drills. It's always important to keep them, keep everybody make sure that they maintain their confidence in their, when they're wearing their air packs. We do some athletic drills to make sure that they are able to, to conserve their air while on that, so that they can work, you know, longer or as long as possible and safely as possible. So we do those drills quite often. More EMS, we did an additional training on safe stretcher operations in preparation for our new ambulance coming in, which should be coming in in the next week or two. It was slightly delayed due to a couple of little things. They had to make some adjustments on, and, but it's, it's coming in very soon, so we will be switching things over from one to the other. It will take some coordination, because we have to coordinate that between the state, not only the Office of Emergency Medical Services, who dictate all the things we do on the ambulance and how we, how we run everything. They have to be involved in switching over everything to make sure we, they know we have a new rec coming. We have stuff to work with the registry, obviously, and in-town insurance to make sure that there's insurance and everything is, is done correctly there. So there will be a downtime of approximately two days while we're, while we're going from one truck to the other, but we'll rely on mostly mutual aid to cover that as we make that transition. But that's normal with any department as they do that, especially a department that only has one ambulance. So we can't just throw things in there and wing it. We have to make sure that everybody gets familiarized with it, it's done properly. We have trainings on it to make sure that we have as much of a flawless changeover as possible. Let's see, we parted with the Warren Community Elementary School, and we moved our antique eighteen forty-seven hand pumper down to the elementary school. If anyone's been down there, it's displayed in the foyer. When you first walk in, it's kind of a neat-looking thing. We're still working on it. We have, we're gonna be making some plaques that kinda have some information based on it, but it actually looks like it's, was meant to be there the entire time. It's kinda, it looks just like a museum display. It has beautiful lights coming down right on it, and, you know, if you haven't seen it yet, take a walk by it, because it's a, it's a really neat piece of history from the, from the town. And there's a very unique story behind it and how it was, how it came to be. So some of those things, we're gonna hope to get up there so people can walk by and they can kinda see it. But I, it truly does look like it kinda belongs there. It's really nice. And as Jim mentioned before, I forget, this isn't really an August thing, it just happened recently, but we, you know, down in, in the budget area, I did mention that we are posting a full-time position. We did have a, one of our full-time firefighters left for another job opportunity out of state. You know, like most, a lot of times, they can't afford to work here sometimes. We've made those things better, and we continue to, to work with that with the help of the Board of Selectment and the Town Administrator and the support of the town. Unfortunately, we still can't compete with some salaries. So, I mean, we do lose people from time to time. The nice thing is, a lot of them end up staying as call firefighters. They don't leave 'cause they wanna leave. They leave because of other opportunities and family, you know, you know, things that they have to take care of. But a lot of times, they'll stay around as a call firefighter, and, and that's the case with this individual. But myself and, and the Town Administrator conducted interviews over the last couple days. We, we have four final candidates. I'm looking to put an offer into one of those candidates tomorrow, see if they will accept the position. But I wanna thank Jim for his, his effort and with working with me to, to conduct those interviews. I think they went really well. We had some really good candidates come through.
Some real top-notch candidates.
Yeah, some, some great qualifications. He did the same with the Police Department recently. So, you know, having Jim on board has, has been a, a great thing for those types of things. I, and I wanna thank him for his effort for that. So that's, that's basically all I have for the report.
Very good. Thank you very much, Chief. It's good to be hiring new people.
Yes, sir.
Chief, the other day I was earlier doing the tablet thing. I really forgot to ask you. I wanted to buy tickets for the.
Oh, yes. We do have some available. So we have the, the spaghetti supper is October fifteenth. It's a couple Saturdays from now. And we do have tickets available at the station. They will be available at the door. You know, this is the first time we've done the event since COVID, so I'm gonna get out, you know, get, get all the rust out of the system. But we've been doing this for years, so I'm sure that they'll, we'll bounce right back from that. I'm sure it'll be a good time. You usually see a couple hundred people come through there. It seems to be a really nice event for the community, and it honestly, you seem to get a lot of support. I, I think most, everyone from the town has been there at some point, and we almost never have any negative things to say. Everyone just kinda comes out. Sometimes it's a little chilly, you know, in the bay and everything, but everybody seems to enjoy themselves.
And it's delicious.
Yeah, it, it's good. They do a great job. And I, as far as I know, this year, we have some, some fantastic donations rolling in from different restaurants providing the food. We're still finalizing those little things, but, but it looks like we'll have some, some great donations. We usually do a raffle, some baskets that are made available from not only members of the fire department, but also local businesses that do donations for us, so we'll have those as usual. But we're looking forward to getting back to that little bit of normalcy and, and having people in the station again. So that'll be a nice event. So that's the fifteenth. Tickets available at the fire station. They can call down, reserve a time to come down and get them. A lot of the members will be out over the next couple weekends selling them. You'll see them around town as, as they have in the past. And they're also available at the door the night of.
How much are they?
Fifteen dollars.
Okay.
For a ticket.
Very good.
Also, we talked about donating a computer.
Oh, yes.
I got a computer for you, I'm going to drop it off next week.
Thank you, sir. So that was, we have what's called a, we have a couple of computer screens in each one of our stations and we have a really nice system down there that's called I Am Responding, which has become a great thing for us and not only does the, it takes a computer to run, it's a very simple program, that's the only program we run with a computer and it allows the members to, and dispatch over in Rutland to see who's on duty. They, they know exactly who's at the station, what they're doing there and everything, they know, we have trucks out of service for any reason. It scrolls the different calls, it comes across as a call comes in and even alerts and everything and it also, the nicest thing about it is, especially for a call department like ours, is if we do have a call, all of a sudden the firefighters are able to sign on, so I know exactly how many of them are coming and where they're coming from. So those days of, oh boy, I hope I get somebody, I hope I got at least five for a major call and this and that, I can look at my phone, I can refresh it, as long as I have service, I can see exactly who's coming, you know, how many are there, I know how many trucks are going to get out the door, you know, in my head, so that's been a nice addition to the, to the department to kind of keep track of that a little bit better. We had the same system at Station B, but unfortunately, I don't know what happened, but the, the computer malfunction had an issue with it and it's no longer supporting that, it's no longer coming up and Derek happened to come for the tablet the other day and I said something to him about it, if he ever had, you know, had access to an older computer that no one was really using that could just run some basic programs and he was good enough to offer one up so we can get that system back up and running. So thank you very much, Derek.
So I actually got two, but what's your preference, box or laptop?
It doesn't matter, the one that it's replacing is a laptop, you know, it doesn't really matter, we have the shelf space down there to fix, to put that up as well, but I mean, laptop, it can stay closed, if you, if you got that, we'll try that first, I guess, and it, it's a little more compact, so, you know, that should be fine.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, next thing on the agenda is emergency management report for August. Okay. Jim McKeon still on, is he going to do it?
I would just read it.
Yeah, it's probably going to be difficult for him. So the emergency, emergency management report for July and August two thousand twenty-two. July first, helped, helped with a concert in the park, four members helped out with parking. On July second, a thunderstorm with heavy rain, one inch of rain in thirty minutes caused some street flooding in West Warren area Chapel and Dean Streets, also a tree on wires on Town Farm Road, some cones were used. July third, test of West, test of Lawrence sirens, test normal. A July third again, some maintenance in the CERT trailer cleaning and painting, two members helped out. July eighth, the touch a truck event with the Parks Department, put on in conjunction with a concert, we had our CERT trailer on display, we also helped with parking cars, five members were present. No, it just keeps on going on.
Nick, can you?
I'm like, wow, that was it? So July fifteenth, concert in the park, the band canceled, members worked on getting the word out about the canceling. July twenty-second, concert in the park at Dean Park, members helped, cars and members assisted. July twenty-third and twenty-fourth, cooling center was open for the senior center due to extreme heat, CERT members helped with check-ins, answering phones, assisting guests and dozen people had shown up throughout the days. August two thousand twenty-two, on the fourth and fifth, cooling center ran again at the senior center. August sixth, we assisted Sturbridge CERT with Pan Am, Pan Ness Bike Race and blocking intersections, had two members from CERT team up. August seventh, test of emergency sirens and then normal. August tenth, listened to statewide conference call about drought conditions. August twenty-fourth, monthly CERT meeting, went over fire extinguisher safety and watched video, we went through our CERT trailer, checked equipment generators, did a refresher of settings, pop-up tents with new sidewall, talked over the plans of upcoming fireworks and car show put on by Cloning for Kids Foundation. The car show was done by Cloning for Kids, right? Because they do the fireworks.
No, they did, yeah, they did the car show.
That was done by Parks. And then we use, we usually go to this event, we had safety information, this is being held on September tenth, seven, seven members attended the meeting. August twenty-seventh, assisted police department with Park and Traffic Control during the fireworks. Event was held at the high school, we also had three members from the Charlton CERT to assist us and we also had five members of the Warren CERT. So that is the emergency management plan, report for August in July, I think June, right? Looks like it was a little bit July, August. So thank you very much to CERT for helping out in the town and thank you very much for outside CERT members coming in to help us too. That's always a help. Okay, next thing on the agenda, notice of filing and public hearing. This hearing was asked for by National Grid if you want to see if there is a link?
Link, sorry.
Link for the Zoom meeting. So what are they asking for?
Okay, so this is basically, they're asking for people to tell them how they feel about their plan to do the twenty nineteen to twenty-one, three-year energy efficiency plan was approved by the department and so they're asking the public to please comment on that. So I'll put this up and you can see the link, it's October twenty-seventh is when the meeting is, so there's a link to the Zoom meeting.
Okay. And then next thing, CMRK, the town of Warren partnered with CMRK and has two bins in the back of the Shepherd Building. You can donate clothing and shoes as of November first, two thousand twenty-two.
Mass. They have put a ban on any kind of textiles going into your garbage.
Okay, I was trying to get the context of that because it's like, Mass has a bin on the textile waste.
Yeah, so Massachusetts textile waste ban is in effect as of November first, two thousand twenty-two. So in the back of the Shepherd Building, we have two big bins and you can put all your textiles and shoes in there. Now, if you want, there's also a phone number where you can call and they can come to your home and do a home pickup.
Okay.
And they accept small appliances also, so if you go on our website, I've already posted the poster and you can see, they have a bunch of other information on this poster.
Okay. All right, there you go. Anything else that we should know about it?
About that, no, I do have one question for you. We, it is time.
We've run out of time.
Real fast.
Okay, go ahead.
It's time to replace all the labor laws and I'd like permission from the board to go ahead and order them for all the buildings and the labor, it's three hundred and seventy-five dollars to do that.
Yeah, we gotta post them.
Okay.
Yeah, they have to be posted, so.
All right, I'll do it. So you guys don't need to order yours, I'll have enough for every building in town.
Okay, cool, thank you. All right, so now we're to the next meeting date, which is October thirteenth. Not twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
David. Mr. Chairman, before you adjourn, can I just ask, can we go back to comments and concerns, one thing popped into my head that I wanted to bring up to the board real quick. I've had numerous, literally it just happened and when she said something, it just, it just registered. I've had several citizens come up to me just in the last couple of weeks alone, looking for an outlet to get residence identification signs for their home, number signs. Like Brimfield has done a huge promotion on it, we've done it before, we've done green signs in Warren, you know, Brimfield has done red signs, there are still quite a few houses that haven't taken advantage of that program, we don't have any currently right now, normally the associations will buy them from time to time and hand them out, but because of the spaghetti supper and stuff like that, they have some of their money tied up in buying, you know, some of that. I was just wondering, because it popped into my head, if there was something the board would consider looking at a small funding source to be able to purchase these and hand them out to the residents. It'd be, it's not a lot of money, you know, you can get these kits, you know, even five hundred dollars would go a long way to be putting it into an account where we could believe, between police and fire, we deal with this all the time, we might be able to purchase these things and hand them out to the community. I think it would be a great thing because we're always facing that battle where we can't find certain houses and even if we, you know, even if we see a house on an inspection that doesn't have one, we have them to hand out and get them installed for them. So I just, I'm just throwing it out there while it was on my mind, maybe some upcoming ARPA money, maybe out of that gift account if there's anything left, however it is, but even five hundred dollars would purchase a decent amount of those signs to be able to hand out to the public, which would number their houses and help us out tremendously.
Can you look at that, see if we can do that? Options if we can?
Thank you.